Evening all.
Hi, Michael, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, you can hear me. I'm gonna be doing this from home because I'm not feeling 100% today.
So that sounds perfect. Thank you very much for consideration. That is exactly why we have it set up. So I haven't heard from Ted and he's not here.
Ted 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 said he's not going to be able to come because he's traveling in Florida.
Great, and Bernie Bernie is working this evening, so. So that so that is all of us are accounted for. So we have four in person. Michael by video and we are all connected, so. I think we can get started here in just a second.
Before we get started, I'd like just like to thank Monica for the support that she gave the planning commission last night. At the public hearing was very well received.
Yes, I agree. And you know, I'll say the exact same thing about you, Michael. So I'm I'll we'll get to that in the announcements as well. So I guess any changes to the agenda? Hey, any changes? Okay, great. So I'm not hearing any agenda changes. Opens the public for items not related to the agenda. There are two people in the waiting room, it looks like. I see a little note there. Okay, so anything from the public not related to the agenda?
Jessica, can I just quick?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, hi, Chris Stromley, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. I just wanted to express my thanks to the planning commission for adopting the inclusionary zoning. That was a significant accomplishment. We're we're excited to see that was adopted citywide. And you know, well, that's incremental progress we can build upon. So thank you, everyone.
Great. Well, thanks, Chris. And hopefully, there's some other things in there that are also gonna push the affordable housing forward as well. So so I think the big announcement kind of going off of what Chris just said is that the the City Council did adopt our land development regulations that we forwarded to them. There were a few small changes that we had looked through and revised our report. And then after that, the City Council made no changes before adopting them. So it's it's as we presented. Plus those legal items. So that was very exciting. It was not unanimous. Councillors may come back with a few kind of comments or questions at some point, but at this point, we haven't been asked anything specific. Or given any additional direction since those last comments and kind of what we're working on now with the the general PUD. So it's very exciting. Both Michael and Monica spoke on behalf of the planning commission and the work and the the consensus making that we did really in support of our work. So I think that that was really helpful, both of what you said to really kind of reiterate that it was a group process with a lot of deliberation. I think that that went a long way towards the councillors voting to adopt it. So thank you. Any other announcements?
Congratulations to us.
Yes. Yeah, it's very and congratulations to staff as well. I mean, we've had tons of support from from staff and other committees and individuals on the commission and and public participation. It's been been a big effort.
There's a lot in this work. You know, I know that there was a focus in the last months on things like conservation PUDs and all of that, but there was huge amount of work. Chris talked about inclusionary zoning. You updated subdivision standards, master plan standards, some of the site plan work. All the smaller things, the solar ready roof requirement. There's a lot in there and you this is this is a big step forward. Plus, you know, now being a statewide leader in floodplain management and wetland work and habitat blocks. There's a lot, lot, lot in there. And yeah, on to the next fun projects.
We're in it already. Good, um.
Yeah, I just was the only thing I was gonna announce is that in the last meeting, I was asked to bring to the Affordable Housing Committee the question of whether they would want to explore the rent versus ownership. And I was not clear on exactly what I should be asking them or what we should, what they can expect from us then. Would they be providing information that we would all dedicate an agenda item to to actually go through and discuss? Would they just be submitting something in writing that, you know, we would maybe read outside of a meeting? So I did not ask them yet. And Jessica will help me better understand exactly what we will be asking and then what the expectations are back on this side, one if they are to bring information to us. So just an update that I did not have that conversation with them. And I think that there was also something that Paul was working on from a legal perspective or something. So I I
Yep. And I was just gonna add that one thing I had mentioned at the last meeting was the staff recommendation would also be that as the Affordable Housing Committee talks about it, regulations are a tool in the toolbox, but they're not the only tool in the toolbox to think about that subject area. And so, you know, while that's a lot of the focus of the planning commission, they can be considering, you know, there's the there's all the ARPA money. Are there ways in which that should be directed to whether the question is homeownership or rental or types of housing or you know, areas of the city, there's a lot to to go into that isn't solely about how we regulate the subject. And we encourage them to, you know, think about it holistically as a as a question.
So I guess if anyone had anything specific for Monica, we could give her some feedback. Michael, were you trying to?
I was gonna ask, are there ways in which the subject can in fact be regulated? In other words, a ratio of rental units to homeownership units or vice versa to to incentivize or encourage encourage one or the other. I thought that it would be largely up to the owner of the development or the developer to decide which which properties he they they would like to sell and which they would like to lease or rent. I know that SD Ireland is leasing quite a lot of the multifamily units in South Village, and they're not available for purchase, but I'm not sure of that. So I'm wondering how such a thing would be regulated?
If if well, and that's I think that's some of the homework, Michael, for staff to look into because it is it is a complex area of law, as I understand it. So we wouldn't want to go down the wrong path. You're correct. You're correct about some of South Village. I would also add that the six and eight plexes, I guess, eight and 10 plexes being constructed now are ownership ones, and they are the first ownership multifamily being built in the city in quite some time. So it's interesting that the market for a very long time was all on the ownership side for multifamily. And it was all on the rental side. And for a while, at least at South Village, they were trying to sell units. But because of the mortgage markets in the early 2010s, shortly after 2008, there was a real challenge that the mortgage companies would only give a loan to the developer if a certain number of the units were pre pre-sold. And what kept happening at to SD Ireland specifically is they'd get one sold, two sold, three sold. By the time they get the fourth one sold, the first one left because it was taking a while. So then you're back down to three and they needed five or six in order to get the mortgage. And so it's just interesting how the markets shift. I think that, you know, the regulatory environment for mortgages became a little bit less restrictive and the demand for ownership grew. So yeah, that's aside, just to say that there's a it's a complex subject area.
Is there a is there a regulatory bar to having a building which is a mix of rental and ownership? Where I come from, it's called sectional title. In other words, the the title of of each apartment in a multifamily, multifamily unit is that the a person can buy it and get title to that section of the building. That's why it's called sectional title. Is there anything like that here?
I'm not sure, Michael. It's something I'd have to look into. I can say anecdotally that within condominiums that are owned by individuals, the condo associations typically can have up to a certain percentage of the units individually being rented. And beyond that, it gets difficult for I I I'm out of my depth, but there's a maximum of 10 or 15% of the units. And if you get past there, it becomes very complicated for the ownership the homeowners' associations.
Well, so so I guess what I was thinking is, you know, this is a topic we haven't talked about. We didn't really address it in a comprehensive plan as far as I know. You know, it came up that it's part of the discussion of kind of housing and housing types and you know, what we want our development developed areas to look like. And I think, you know, we just maybe don't have the capacity or the expertise, but I know that the Affordable Housing Committee has worked on demographics and has looked at statistics on rent versus own in the past and may or may not want to weigh in on it. So I think the first question for them is really is this a subject that is important? And if so, could they at least give us some direction on what we should look at if they don't have the capacity to do it themselves? And, you know, I think you're bringing up some good points. There's some legal pieces about whether or not we can even regulate or if there's a different tool. But you know, I think it's just a new topic for us and it's a little, but it's it's kind of similar to what we're working on. So I think that's what I see as the ask.
I agree with you with you, Jessica, that it is something for the Affordable Housing Committee to do, but because you know, access to affordable dwelling for a lot of people can only be done via rental units. Because they don't have the capital to invest in in buying something. So it's an affordability issue as well, that there should be adequate both adequate rental units available as well as those that are available for people who can and want to buy.
Yeah, no, I just want to give some feedback real quick. And Monica, I don't know if this is relevant at this point, but I just my personal feeling is I would be very leery of us regulating ownership. I would be much more enthusiastic about us trying to find ways to incentivize developers to do ownership. I agree with the goal of trying to get more people on, but I would be very wary of the regulation path versus incentivize. For what it's worth, that that's my
Right, I'm looking forward to the conversation. I don't know what I'm learning also. And they're not, this isn't on the agenda. So I was only bringing up that I have to do this, but I I'm curious to know what you're what were the what's bringing that decision to you, but I don't need to know now. But when we talk about it, I'd love to know what that's based on, you know, I think that'll be helpful for all of us because I'm also trying to learn.
And then I guess as for kind of how we would receive it, I think if if the Affordable Housing Committee, like, you know, we've asked this question, if they spend time and you know, have some answers, then I would expect that to be like an agenda item where we would like take time to like have it in our packet and then talk through it. And maybe someone from their committee could come and like walk us through what the discussion was. So so yeah, I don't think we would just like get it by email and ignore it. Like, I think we would wanna really have the information.
Did we give Monica definitive ask for the Affordable Housing Committee, or is it kind of a?
It sounds like that's I'm to ask them if they want to weigh in. And if they do want to weigh in, I'm to say, great. And while staff is also doing investigation, we will let you know when it will be on an agenda. We will ask you to come in and provide in person your.
Personally, I'd prefer if the Affordable Housing Committee did most of the legwork and then come to the commission with some ideas about how we might be involved. At this point, I think it's the Housing and Affordable Housing Committee should do the do the work.
I'm not sure about that because it's not an affordability issue. It's a homeownership issue. So I think we need to give them the opportunity. It's not about perpetual affordability. It's about homeownership. So that's why they may or, you know, I they have great information. But it's, yeah, I mean, if we decide it's about affordability, that's one thing, but it's it's kind of different. So.
Right. Well, I think that that's probably. So I think we're probably into our commissioners reports from committees. So that was a question kind of about that particular thing. So while we're on the Affordable Housing Committee, Monica, did you have anything else you'd like to kind of report out or?
Wait, I'm sorry. So we're we're under for our own announcements right now, or?
So we're, I think we've kind of
I have no other announcements, but did you need?
So we had we had just put some time on the agenda in case somebody you know, who's working on some of the other committees had something they wanted to bring back to us.
I mean, I just had, this is not a report from a committee. I personally would like to have a better understanding of how the planning commission should receive communication from any of our committees. I give the example of when we were looking at the Spear Swift bike, sorry, rotary. Personally, I could not support it. But I said, the reasons I can are for safety and I need to understand. I'm not the expert. I would like to know what the Bike and Ped Committee has to say about that. And they gave an official document to us. And because they trusted the safety, I trusted their expertise over mine because I don't have it. I honored what they brought to us and their information helped me make a vote. And if I voted against it, it wouldn't have changed the full commissions, but it did inform my vote. I would like to understand going forward what how we can as a commission better accept information that we spent some time really processing and decide how it can or should impact our decisions. And can we inform committees the best way that they can get our attention, even if it's something off agenda? What would they need to do if there was an important issue they wanted any committee? Whether they have an liaison or not, what is the most effective way for them to bring information to us? And what's the process for that? So that it's not just you know, an email that gets shared around and not necessarily given agenda time or any time to be discussed. I don't know what the answer is, but it's just a comment I would have for us to think about going forward for all committees. So that we can learn from them. So.
Yeah, that's a good question. We we've often gone through staff because there's like the staff committee. Yeah, you have kind of a staff council or some, I forget what you call it, but.
Well, the the liaisons for all the staff meet together on a semi regular basis to sort of coordinate issues and things like that. But I hear what you're hear what you're saying. I think our city manager and I have started some conversations about how to help coordinate amongst the various different committees and how to get key information to the council, to the planning commission as sort of the lead policymaking bodies. So all good questions and we'll continue to work on that. And you're also welcome to to spend some time on it if you like in an upcoming meeting.
You know, Jessica, Paul brought us up to date last week on the Climate Action Task Force activity. And since then, the task force has been divided into groups, smaller groups to attack or develop ideas about each of the categories that we want to follow and develop paths of of action. What I'm and I'm on a couple of those and we're working on them. We haven't done any reports to the task force yet. But I do think from what I've seen so far, I think a lot of the end product, maybe even interim product of the Climate Action Task Force will have an impact on the work of the planning commission. Now, there will be things that the Climate Action Task Force recommends to the City Council, and then the City Council may come back to us to the planning commission and say, we'd like you to do this, that, and the other. So I think the work will it will have an impact on what we do going forward. Not just waiting until the end of the until September or whenever it is that the Climate Action Task Force will have its final reporting.
Just right. Yeah, thank you, Michael. Anything else from anyone?
There's the Airport Rezoning Group and Task Force. And our public hearing was supposed to be last Thursday, but we got snowed out. So that's been postponed until next Thursday, the 17th. The other meetings, the meeting that was planned was that, waiting for the public hearing.
Okay.
Is it public hearing or public comment, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, if I can jump in.
I don't think so, no.
Michael, the intention for the, I've been calling it a public comment session. It's a listening session for the members of the public to come in and express their this one is more is framed more generally, sort of their views for what they would like for the area that the airport has requested to be rezoned to look like, what they would or would not like to be allowed there, sort of very general community level questions. So it would be the the intention is that the task force would be would not be in a position to be answering any questions or addressing any issues or having a dialogue with the public. It is an opportunity to sort of absorb public comment and see what everybody is thinking.
Thank you. Any other committee items? Anything staff thinks that we should be updated from other committees? Okay, then we can move on to five, which is a discussion of the general. And okay, so we're all back connected. So in addition to the general PUD draft, there's some updates to the site plan and master plan as outlined in the packet. Do you want to walk us through anything, Kelsey?
Sure, absolutely. So I framed this. There's there's a lot going on and there's a lot of things that have moved from previous drafts to this draft. There's a lot of things that we're treating a little bit differently. The four primary topics were how we deal with civic space and open space, that the design standards have been moved into site plan. The reasons why the DRB can modify a standard in a general PUD have been expanded. And the applicability has changed a little bit. So I just was gonna go through those one at a time, just intro the subject, open it up for discussion from the commissioners and then kind of move on to the next, if that isn't appropriate.
So I know during our last meeting, we'd asked for some kind of feedback from the DRB. So it sounds like you that's part of this.
Yeah, great. Yep, we had a conversation with the DRB staff and that there the DRB itself is also swamped at this point. So we couldn't actually get into a DRB agenda for on sort of on the record discussion. But speaking with staff, we got some insight into what is and isn't helpful for the DRB in their review process. So that's what we can bring back. So the first would be the civic space and open space question. Our understanding from the last meeting is that the commission is more or less that the commission is concerned about requiring civic space and open space and not necessarily just in PUDs and not necessarily tied to any specific tool. So it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to the PUD tool. It could live somewhere else. But also general applicability of those civic space standards is important. This is a bit of a change from the in the last few days from the draft that we submitted to in the packet. In the packet, there is a civic space and open space requirement that is specific to the general PUD. When we were looking at the regulations more holistically, it felt like both a little confusing and a little bit of overkill. So what we decided instead is there the LDRs that have just been adopted have a civic space requirement in subdivision. So a major subdivision over two acres is already required to have 10% of open space. Considering that we also we were trying to figure out which what kinds of developments would be covered by that requirement, but not and which ones would not, which ones would sort of slip through the cracks. The way we dealt with that was if you put in site plan, then you could actually hit all all developments that came in for site plan would be be required some level of civic space or open space. Currently, there's no civic space or open space requirement in site plan itself. The intention being that there are some things that come in for just site plan. There are some things that come in for just subdivision. There's a lot of things that come in for both. And a PUD sort of lives in between. It's an option for those those projects that come in that would require both. But I'm have a, whoops, sorry, have a more holistic review through the PUD process. So what we landed on doing, and I'm just pulling up this is different than what we have. Yeah.
Does it seem to like in the draft, it was in the PUD, but then at the very end, you had a spot where you talked about maybe putting in chapter 14?
Yeah. So taking a step back for a second, the way that the subdivision rules are currently written, any PUD is a major subdivision. Just definitionally. So if you have a PUD that hasn't involves no actual subdivision of land, if it is over two acres, it would fall into the bucket that requires 10% of open space. The as I'm having trouble explaining, we talked, Paul and I talked about this for a very long time today. And now I've lost myself in what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Well, so it sounds like if we, you know, in the draft, it has the open space civic space in the general PUD. But what you're saying is that if we put it in a different part of the regulations, we won't miss anything. So
It's already it's already in subdivision. That's already something that has been covered. So anything that is over two acres and is an actual subdivision of land or is a PUD that qualifies as a major subdivision already has that requirement. If you put it in site plan as well and apply a difference, a slightly different standard on it, you would catch anything that would be site plan. We ran into some issues today doing math, some math on examples where there were some small parcels under two acres that when you applied the 15% that was in the PUD draft or even the 10% that's in the subdivision draft, it becomes a significant burden on the size of some of these smaller lots. Once you get smaller. Once you get smaller, those percent, this percentage stays the same, but you have a lot of other things you're trying to cram onto the same lot with. Stormwater and parking and the building itself and everything else. So we were looking for a way to capture both. Requiring sub, requiring civic spaces, but also not overburdening some of these smaller lots.
Somebody brought a comment to me that may be a benefit or may maybe a help to this particularly in. Maybe the smaller. Less than two acre situations, but it may be for the other as well. And I'm not. You know how I'm very focused on things, but this came just from somebody else. The question was. This is a place that that's a meeting, but I believe the Paul, there was a motion, I believe that was the motion for you to. Consider where in underlying zoning, so I'm not trying to go back to that, but after that meeting, somebody asked me, is that a possibility? That particularly in those cases, that the private balcony, when you multiply it over. Can work towards the civic. An open space requirement. And that may be particularly helpful on the less than two acre parcels in these busy, you know, transit overlay districts.
Yeah, Michael, you and your hand, Tom.
Yes, I know we discussed this a bit last time, but to Kelsey's point about it being a burden. It's also. It would also affect the quality of life of those who live, if this is residential. Of the people who live in these in in these general PUDs or infills and on a small lot on an acre and a half. So I think my own view is we should have as much civic space as we can possibly get. Because that really makes a huge difference to the the people who are going to live there. I'd rather, I'd rather see perhaps. A taller building on a smaller footprint. But keep as much civic or open space as we can for those who live there. It's really quite. Quite critical in my mind.
I guess I have a question that might maybe help inform Monica's question a little bit. You know, it refers back to the table eight dash one. I guess I'm wondering if we need to take a quick look at that and see.
So I can tell you exactly what's in that. So that is actually the open, the civic space slash site amenity requirements from the form based code. So what what I've, what we've done from the draft that you've gotten to this idea that maybe we pull it out of the PUD altogether. And we put it in subdivision and site plan is that the site plan requirements would actually be identical to the T four transect. Of the form based code. So that's either 6% of. The gross floor area of a non-residential building. Or their per unit square footage requirements for residential buildings. And it would be identical to what's applied in the form based code in T four already. It would just take that standard and apply it to all site plans.
Yeah, so I'm a little just, I'm, I get a little bit confused in our process here because I asked a very specific and I'm, I don't need an answer, but I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where, that's where I was going. So I wanted to kind of go back to Monica's question also, not just about the. The area, not just about the area, but the types of open space. Monica had a question about the, it was basically a type with the, with the type called private open space balcony with that.
Not in all, but in some circumstances, could that count?
Cause I don't think right now that's one of the qualified open space types, but we do have things like rooftop areas.
Right, so currently that table is in article eleven B. That's where the open space, the civic space types and the site amenity types are defined. Eight dash one is the amounts that are required in the form based code. So eleven B has, you know, sorry, park, park let, all of those definitions, but also. Outdoor seating for a publicly accessible cafe, roofed rooftop terrace, rain garden. Recreational areas, all sorts of things like that. The general overview is. My reading, almost all of them are required to have at least some outdoor component. And most, if not all of them are communally oriented. So the civic, the civic spaces are. In my understanding are more publicly oriented that they're a little bit bigger, they're a little more park like, they're a little more accessible to the general public. Things that are site amenities could be a little more internal to a site. But still are required to be fairly communal. So strictly strictly private per unit. My understanding is that it would not qualify under the current, the way the tables and the definitions are currently set up, but Paul can.
Right, no, that that is correct. And just as a little bit of historical background. When the city center form based code was put together, that was one of the questions before you. And you decided that you did not want balconies to count at that time. Back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, when you adopted the city center form based code. And my recollection is that you felt that it was important that there be a physical. Mostly on the ground, but potentially rooftop communal space that represented. For lack of a better word, breathing room in the urban fabric, rather than having it be sort of bisected into. You know, six by ten balconies. Not to say that there isn't a different way of going about it, but that was the decision at that time. That, you know, you're more than welcome to weigh and consider. In the future.
And I remember it quite well, Paul, and I think it was a good decision and I think we should stick with it. Balconies are part of a building. Fine, but are they civic space? Not really. They're private space, but not civic space.
Well, when we're looking at some of the smaller parcels, particularly, I'm thinking of one particular one on Shelburne Road that I imagine is. Hot to trot right now. It's not large. And if we're running into those circumstances on those less than two acre areas. If it, you know, has a new opportunity to provide a solution and in a post COVID era. Give us a way to meet that. It's, I would hope it's something that could be considered.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to some of these small parcels and we did some rough calculations, just GIS and and. Rough measurements, not nothing to compare to, nothing totally accurate, but. The form based code requirements for open space range between eighty-five and a hundred square feet per unit. That would then be aggregated into a, you know, a site plan or a site amenity or a civic space. And even on these small properties, an acre, an acre and a half. We could figure out ways, just, you know, back of the envelope, that we could make that work on a site. When you got a little bit farther and you got a little bit higher, and especially when you tied the amount of required space. To the size of the lot, it ended up being pretty significant where. There wouldn't, there was, it was a lot harder to find places on these hypothetical developments that you could fit some of these things. It became a much. I understand where Michael's coming from, that maybe the word burden is not the right word. It's a little bit of a loaded word and I. It's not, it's not really what I mean, but when you have small. We're trying, we're trying to balance both promoting infill and promoting redevelopment with. Doing it well and doing it where we do have requirements for civic space and site amenities. And finding the balance between those two things is how we landed on. More or less having the subdivision rules apply to larger parcels. And these site plan rules that come from the form based code applying to all parcels. So when you get down to the smaller parcels, you get down to the more infill and redevelopment parcels. You have a little bit less of a requirement that makes everything still work and you still get infill happening. Because what we don't want to do is. Require so much that the infill doesn't happen at all and then properties just sit. And that's a, that's a balance with some of the development problems.
Or discourage. Buildings going up.
Yeah.
So for example, we were looking, one of the case studies we looked at was. There's an approved redevelopment of Cagle Sitco. They proposed and got approval for a two and a half story building, two and a half story building. They really squeezed the parking, but there's a minimum, there's some, some amount of parking that they need to do on site. If, as Kelsey said, we looked at the site amenity standard from the form based code and with a little bit of rejiggering, they could have made a nice. Site amenity that worked on that site. If it were to be significantly larger. The likely outcome is that they would have said, okay, well, you know, a bank wanted to come in here as a one story building. And then they would have come in as a one story building that generated less parking. And also had a, and then they could have met it, but you know, then you're not getting the upper stories of potential housing. Of urban form and, you know, ultimately tax revenue to the city of having more vertical. So that's the sort of balance that we're sort of trying to, trying to incentivize and also, you know, back to sort of the big picture here. As Kelsey started out, one of the things that we think we heard from you is that new development should have civic space associated with it. Site amenities associated with it. So the proposal in here would be that. Everything subject to a site plan, which is anything more than a single or two family home. Hereforward, regardless of whether it's a PUD or whatever, would have a site amenity associated with it. And then as we get to a larger project that has a subdivision, the subdivision, as you've already just had adopted last night. Would bring in the civic space requirement with it above a certain scale. So that's kind of the the suggestion that we have about how to really bring this into the urban fabric and. You know, take, take a big step forward and then ultimately the role of a PUD becomes sort of. Creativity and design, but not amounts of civic or site amenity space. The amounts are set elsewhere. The PUD might allow to be a little more creatively laid out, but that's it. So we sort of de-emphasize its role in a PUD and instead say, doesn't matter what tool they use. That's what Kelsey was describing. It doesn't matter what tool they use. It's just the outcome should be equally good regardless of the tool.
Michael had to send it, but I do have a question.
Paul, then Michael.
So. City center and most of Williston Road is covered by form based code. So why not just extend form based code to Shelburne Road to the Shelburne Road corridor? And that would be it, right?
That is also another question someone asked me.
I think, Paul, we are moving in that direction between the urban design overlay and these types of standards. The reason for not formally going to a form based code is. At least in my view, it's a. With city center, there was a very clear vision of exactly where the streets were going to be, what it was going to look like, what the scale of it should be. In Shelburne Road, there's a little more of a hodgepodge of, there's car dealerships that are going to be there for a while. There's places like IDX. It's got more variability in it. And so it's hard, it was, it was hard in our view to. Write a code that says this is the answer, but taking the best of the form based code from the urban design overlay standards. The civic space standards gets us much closer to there without some of the really strict parameters of the form based code. So that was, that was sort of my thinking on it, but you know, this is your decision making.
Some pretty nice form based code buildings on Shelburne Road.
There are that that can be, yeah, that that we're touting regularly as examples of how to for others to do it.
Michael and then Monica.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on something that Kelsey said, which was that in in the foremost code district. It's, you know, eighty-five to a hundred square feet per unit. And, you know, a hundred square feet is is ten by ten or eight by ten. That's equivalent of a bedroom or. You know, a bedroom of civic space for each unit see sounds, it might sound small. But I think it's adequate when you put it all together. Is that something that, is that, is that what you were referring to, Kelsey?
Yes, so it would, the, it's just a definition, a different way to define the amount of required civic space or sign amenity. Instead of being tied to the buildable area of the lot, it's tied to the number of units and each. Unit is a per unit square footage.
The more responsibility you have.
So the, the, the more floors you have, the more building you do, the more units you have, the more. Civic space and site amenity requirement you have. And yes, the intention is that it would then be aggregated, not necessarily into. A single civic space, maybe it's two or three, depending on how the site works out, but it would be aggregated into a larger. As Paul put it, breathing, breathing room area.
Yeah, and and related, I mean, this would apply to to parcels of less than two acres.
Yes, if we play, if we put it in site plan, it would require anything, it would be required for anything that required a site plan.
Yeah, so my question is, if we were to go this route of putting. All of the civic space related stuff into the either site plan or the subdivision, depending on acreage. Would we do that at the same time and have it as part of the package? When this general PUD, generic PUD goes forward so that we're not leaving that out in any circumstances.
Yeah, I think our intention is, is yes, because it is a goal of the commission that was expressed that it should be part of the PUD. But then also we backed up and said, well, it actually should be a part of any new development. So putting it. Changing, changing the wording in subdivision and then adding this new language into site plan. Covers the general PUD, but then covers everything else. So would, yes, it would all be as one, one package.
Through a few scenarios over the last few days of making sure that it works not on. Sort of for the average parcel, but also some of the extremes. And so Kelsey has some proposals of. How to deal with sort of some of, some of the outer ends of this, because you know, you apply a rule, it has to apply across the board. And sorry, I had to step out for a moment there, but did you talk about sort of the offsite ability in certain circumstances?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
So if the commission likes this approach, then, you know, one of the things that we had talked about at your last meeting was. In certain circumstances, the, a portion of the facilities could be nearby. If there's a park nearby, and that's one of the ways that you might be able to help with some of these smaller parcels. If they're very close to a facility, then you'd be able to get some level of credit for what's nearby. As, as one of the tools in the toolbox.
Yep, and and that language was actually was in the draft. It was included in the PUD draft, but we would be moving it into. The other, into the other regulations and actually. So I defined it as a walkable connection within a half mile. We discussed it and we think maybe that a quarter mile is actually more reasonable for a walkable. Amenity. So we would propose that that be reduced to a, to a quarter mile from, from the.
So just so we're clear, because I, what I was going to finish up by saying was, so I don't have to talk about it anymore, is I would and I'm tempted to make a motion. Just to make sure that it's understood. That in the circumstance where we're doing site plan for the two acre under and you're in that, we don't want to. Limit people from wanting to add their floors and add density. I guess I'm not clear. Are we going to investigate if? Are we going to investigate if balcony can be part of that or does it need a motion or? Is it not the time? Should I just make motions? But where, where did we leave that? Because I'm not clear and I just don't want it to get lost if it is something that can be a help in the under two acre. Site plan, because I know it's not listed right now as something that can happen in the T four.
Right.
And so it would have to be something specific to just basically any, an option for any. Less than two acre site plan.
Right. My gut reaction is that it's not a bad idea. It's just a little more complicated. So in the intention of getting. The PUD, the getting the general PUD adopted for other non-civic space related reasons that we, that the commission wants to get this. Shorter term PUD included and then covering the bases of the civic space. It may be a good idea to o- open that. It may be a good idea to o- open that conversation as kind of the next iteration. Just because this is something I think that is fairly easily adoptable now, because it's referring to existing standards, is referring to standards that have been tested. And fully discussed, we have buildings that have been developed under the form based code.
I'm just not picturing what's within a quarter mile of the corner of Swift and Shelburne Road that's safe to get to. Like, there's Feral Park. But where else within a quarter of mile is it reasonable? To, I, I don't see that being a reasonable.
So you.
In our, in our major, on our major arteries is what I'm really concerned about.
So it first, you would not be able to count nearby amenities as a hundred percent of the requirement. It would, I have it in the draft as fifty percent, but that number can be changed for, to whatever the commission. Believes is reasonable, but you, so you would still have a requirement for onsite amenities. So. If you, if you could demonstrate that a quarter mile away was, was Feral Park or was um. What, the park in the orchards that, whose name is escaping me. Um, if you can demonstrate distance from those, you get fifty percent taken care of, but you do still have a requirement for onsite. Civic space or site amenity. Um, and if you can't demonstrate something walkable, then you, then you're required to meet the full onsite requirement. Chat, adding an additional, I, I, what I'm hearing from you is that. You would like a discussion of whether private or semi-private outdoor space would be considered a site amenity. And I, um, it is just my personal opinion. It's, I haven't talked to Paul about this. Um. My personal opinion is that does complicate it a little bit and it is something that is easily. This, that is something that we can be, discuss and update this, this regulation as, as needed in the coming months.
Yeah, my, my concern is simply, I'm thinking of the main or arteries. I'm thinking of Swift and Shelburne Road. And I don't know how. It feels like there's an, we'll be forcing a fit with the civic requirement there. If we, if we, if it can't fit there. Um, I, I'm not understanding how, how that, how we can accomplish the civic requirement on. Um, on the major arteries. Where's the Larkin building that's on um. By the McDonald's, does that have a civic requirement right now? It does not, right?
It does not have a civic requirement, but it does have a few different spaces. Um, there's restaurant space, there's some space up front, there's some space in the back.
Right. See, I'm just worried that, yeah, that, that like you look at that, I don't know how they would have ever dealt with a ten percent civic space. Like what would? How would they have done that? Right? So that's why I, I do think that even if it's more complicated, it may be something. Particularly on these main arteries, that's important enough to at least try to consider.
Um, one possibility that we did that around a little bit that you can consider, if you like this general approach. Is um, we talked a little bit about balconies. We also talked about, there's nothing in our regulations that. Encourages or speaks to indoor common space in a building. That could be something that is, that you consider. So speaking of the Larkin building, for instance, on the top story. Across from the laundry room, which is interesting that they put the laundry room in the top story, but. They created a common room that looks out over uh. The, over Lake Champlain and they put the laundry room up there because they figured, well, people will use this space if they're doing their laundry. So it's an indoor space. It doesn't, you know, the doors open up so that you can see outdoors. It's not quite the same thing in terms of outdoorsness, but it is a twelve month space. So that's one piece that you could consider as another way that somebody could get to it. You know, I think first we would encourage, is the overall approach a good approach here? And then. If the tools need, you know, we're missing a, 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 a type of amenity, let's add that type of amenity in. But if the. If the overall approach isn't a good approach, then you don't need to have this conversation at all.
I like your approach. Um, Duncan?
Yeah, no, I, I just had a, a clarifying question, Chelsea. So. At the bottom of page two in the P U D, you're proposing, take it out of there. And move it down to what was it, section fourteen?
Are you looking at section, number three?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, when I said moving to section fourteen, that's article fourteen of the L D R, so that's the site plan.
Yes.
Section, so yeah.
So the idea was to move it out of the P, general P U D?
Yes.
And then the, the minimum goes from fifteen down to five to catch those smaller properties?
The, the P U D would, the P U D would no longer actually have the civic space requirement in it at all. How we get, how we get the civic space requirement is that subdivision and site plan rules do apply. We can specifically prohibit the D R B from waiving these requirements that can be included. And then if you, if the D R B is not allowed to waive them and they live in subdivision and site plan, they apply to the P U Ds in the same way as they would to anything else. The site plan requirement is six percent of the gross square footage for non-residential. Or a per unit eighty-five to a hundred, depending on the number of units. For residential, those are numbers from the form based code. They're not in this draft. So the language that would be moved. Effectively, what you, what we'd be doing is cutting to A. In that section E and then. To B is more or less the site plan standard with some language tweaks. And then number three would go with to be into site plan. Um, and we also discussed it going also into subdivision for any subdivision under. We landed on six acres that could also be moved. So that small subdivisions could get the same fifty percent credit from nearby amenities. As you could for small site plans, but that is, that's completely optional and it's just something we were batting around today.
Can you just explain that fifty percent? So let's just say, take, go back to that Shelburne and Swift and Feral Park is right there, which let's just say it's a quarter of an acre, but I'm.
Quarter mile.
Might be less than a quarter. I mean, that might be more than a quarter of a mile.
Okay, and that number can also be, I have it in this draft.
That it is. So are you saying that because that park is so close, the building just. Is relieved of fifty percent of their.
If they can, if the, they would have to demonstrate a walk, I wrote it as a walkable connection, so they would have to demonstrate that you could walk. Down Lindenwood, you could walk down on a, a safe sidewalk, you could get to that park, first of all, that there wasn't, you know, a railroad track or a wall or something in the way. And then because of the existence of that park, the requirement on the site would be reduced by fifty percent.
And would they have to put that? Money or outdoor, uh, towards something different or they're just?
No, the, the, it's, the intention was that they were relieved of it because. The goal is for these sites, types of sites to be somewhat interconnected and not just have a development here that's standalone, a development here that's standalone. And having them connect with walkable, walkable ways to get to other parks, to other civic spaces, to other areas. And then you still have something that's required on your site. But it makes developing very small sites and developing sites with existing constraints of, you know, redevelopment issues and things like that. More viable while still maintaining a quality of life for. People who work in the building or people who live in the building by having that amenity still nearby. There are, there are places in South Burlington that would have nothing that qualifies within a quarter mile, within a half mile even, that you'd have to put everything on site. And that's totally fine, because the intention is that a person who works or lives in that building or on that development can easily get to. These types of amenities and whether it's onsite or offsite. We wanted to be able to give a bit of credit to developers where there was existing community resources. That they didn't have to do quite as much onsite because of that. But if there wasn't anything also else available, you have to do the full, full amount.
And this was something that we were proposing would be applicable to smaller properties only.
Once you hit. Yes.
Right, so once you get to a certain scale, you know, if we're talking about. We're, we're, we're looking maybe six acres, you're looking beyond six acres, you have, you, you have the responsibility to put it on your site. So this is really a tool to um, both accommodate smaller properties, but also maybe. Incentivize a little bit higher level of density near where there is a facility. Where this, you know, where the taxpayers are already maintaining a facility like Feral Park in this example.
And frankly, the math kind of works out that way, that once you get above sort of six acres or so. You're no longer a quarter mile. It's, it's a quarter mile across your development. It's not, you can't get to anything else. From, from that quarter mile. The other thing that I would just point out quickly is that I wrote it that um. It would be measured from all ac, from the access points of all buildings. It's a little bit more complicated and, but in, I was just thinking, instead of it being the boundaries of the P U D. Or the development, you would have to be the quarter mile, half mile, whatever measurement you ended up deciding from. Anywhere that people are, are exiting the building. So on these very small parcels. It wouldn't make a ton of difference, but on sort of the three, four, five acre part, like subdivisions, it starts to. To affect how much can be counted at a certain distance from the. From the development, but again, that's just how I, how I wrote it, how I sort of threw out the draft and uh, can, everything can be discussed and tweaked.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kelsey. I, I never really got clarity on.
Yes, oh, sorry.
The, the minimum, so you say five percent, so, and this, this would reside in site plan, yes?
Where are you seeing?
I am at the bottom of, uh, after, I'm out of the draft, I'm in that first page, section. Fourteen oh six A, it says as a new subsection four.
Yes, so we have, the discussion, yeah, the discussion today was. On these, on these, on the site plan side, it was simpler and cleaner to cut the buildable area. Based measurement and go solely with the building size measurement. So for A would be cut. And you'd only have the form based code based standard.
So, and then once you get above a certain size, that like six acres, you said that's when the.
If it's a subdivision.
Division regs, I'm just trying to understand where, what the parameters for the.
Right, so, so let's, let's um, just summarize briefly. Um, all properties that would be subject to a site plan would be required to have a site amenity with it. Um, and that would be calculated based on the city center T four standard. So that applies to everybody for the very small properties. Um, that, a portion of that could potentially be offsite nearby. So that's that category. The other category would be subdivisions. Exceeding two acres in size, which is what is in your current adopted regulations. If it's a major subdivision, meaning three lots or more. Uh, of over two acres in size involved. Ten percent of the land needs to be put towards a civic space, meaning like a little park. And again, in that scenario, a portion. Uh, up to uh, for the smaller subdivisions, a portion of that could be offsite. Is that a correct summary? And is there a, is there a credit between the two? I can't remember now.
Um, not exactly, but we were discussing.
Oh, oh, right.
How? What?
I got it, I got it. So, um, so there's these two levels of things. There's the civic spaces in a subdivision, which is basically its own parcel that becomes. A little park. And then there's the site amenity. On small properties, the site amenity could partially be offsite. That would mean that on this sort of mid-sized property that's a subdivision. Where you create a little park, that park could count as part of your site amenity because you've now created an offsite. Uh, uh, civic space park. So you get to, we're not, we're not double, we're not double dipping you. That you have to, if you have a five acre lot, that you have to both build. A, a, a park and then a large site amenity. You get a little bit of credit for doing both at the same time. Does that make sense? And then that would apply regardless of whether you happen to choose to be a subdivision and then site plans like. Tilly Drive, or you happen to be a P U D that does it all as one thing. Whichever form you take, the end result winds up being the same. That's, I think, sort of the key thing that we were trying to pull out in the last few days is to not have. If you go through this process, you have X requirement. If you go through this process, you have something else, because fundamentally. It's about the built community and what people experience as what they live, not the process that an applicant happened to go through to get there. That's, that's our view. Does that make sense as a, as a little summary on this? Okay.
Monica, so when you started, um, I was hearing like two acres is the differential between a site plan and a subdivision in terms of this. And two acres sounds like a good number to me, but then it kind of changed to six acres or different thing.
The two acres, it already exists in your subdivision regulations. A major subdivision under two acre, any subdivision under two acres does not have to have the ten percent of buildable area.
Right, so, so there really is just these two groups. It's just either greater than two acres or less than two acres, right?
Except we added up to about six acres in subdivision that you could have some of it off, some of your requirement. If you're between two and six acres.
Okay.
You could have some of your subdivision related requirement come from offsite.
So that's really helpful. So then, so then back to this then, I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but like when we look at city center. To your point, Paul, we knew, or whoever's point that was, we knew exactly where it was going to be. We knew that there was going to be a park in the middle. We knew it was going to be around that. We knew it's not on major arteries. Um, maybe, you know, for the most part in there, what we're talking about now are primarily. Lots on major arteries. And so I just would ask that you really think about that, because anytime somebody has to leave. The state, leave the space, it's not going to be a kid doing that. On Shelburne Road and crossing Shelburne Road, crossing Williston Road. I mean, it's, we kind of have to look at it, I think, the offsite piece, I think, has to just be considered. Carefully and, and, and I would just ask you to do that, because that is primarily what we're talking about. I mean, Wil, Heinsberg and Kennedy Drive. And these are all places that. It, it, you, it's not realistic. Yeah, it's not like really a connection. Yeah, and um, yeah.
So that's, so that's the reason why I wrote that it has, the, the applicant would have to demonstrate a walkable connection to these other amenities for, for an offsite.
They might say that a crosswalk is a walkable and.
But that's, right, but that's where the discretion of the D R B comes in.
Well, I think, I think walkable for a five-year-old by themselves. How's that? You know what I'm saying? Like, I just, I, I don't know what it is, but. It needs some extra care there and I'm not trying to put up hurdles because I'd like this to happen promptly. It would be fantastic, but I think we need to give it. That extra thought and. So maybe some things will become more complex anyway, and maybe if separate. Okay, period and next sentence and G, maybe the balcony conversation will be a convenient. Um, solution in those cases, but regardless, forgetting about that. I would just be really mindful of where these are.
I'm wondering if, this is just me having a conversation now, if, if. You would be more comfortable with less of the amenity space being. Able to be waived by offsite, like requiring more to remain onsite. So that you end up having to have a small playground or a small park onsite and may, does that alleviate some of your concerns about counting offsite amenities?
I would say.
Point of view, it should.
You know, if you've got a good offsite piece, not that far away, I think the onus is on the developer to prove it's a safe, walkable connection. I mean, that's, maybe that's what you're looking for.
And we just have a definition of what we mean by that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, walking along Shelburne Road is not a safe, walkable connection, but if, if. If, I think if the developer can prove or show or. Create a really safe, walkable connection to an offsite amenity. I think they should get credit for that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, I, and, and you know, I'm thinking there's probably honestly more opportunity for that on the west side of Shelburne Road. Because there's more open potential space back there, right? I don't know how they would do it on the east side of Shelburne Road, because it backs up to somebody's home. And you can't, and seven is a highway that we can't control, so they can't, there's nothing they can really do. So I, again, I don't know what the solution, I agree with you Duncan, I think that we would need to be very careful about what that definition of safety is. Um, and to your question about, does it mean it stays on? I mean. Uh, then we create hurdles and they say, oh, never mind, I'll just do the one story bank. So I don't, I don't want to encourage them to do. Then we create hurdles and they say, oh, never mind, I'll just do the one story bank. So I don't, I don't want to encourage them to do a one story bank. I'd like to see them not do that. And so I don't know what the solution is.
Michael.
Yeah, I'm sort of trying to find a real life example. For example, if if one of these small developments was in a place like. Proudty Parkway. Would an offsite amenity be city center park?
Yes, if it met the distance, yes.
I mean, they'd have to cross. Heinsberg Road. On which there are no sidewalks. To get to this place. How to to Moni, I don't know how Monica can find. How we can find the way to make Monica feel comfortable that it's safe.
Well, I mean, we we can play with that a little bit in the specific example of Proudty Parkway, and I know you were just using as an example, Michael. Like, I'm happy to report that as of two months ago, we now have a formal flashing beacon crosswalk. Right at that intersection across the two lane road. So it's less of an obstacle that it used to be, and it's connected on by sidewalks. Now, you know, whether Kennedy Drive. Even with a crosswalk is the same thing. Maybe that's something for us to to play with a little bit. As to whether, you know, something like that would apply.
I mean, example, it might just have to connect on the same side as a major artery. Maybe that's the way to do it. It just if the building's on the west side, it has to connect to something on the west side. If it's just to. Prevent that kind of.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, adding smirking about the safety.
Yeah, I I surely to some extent. Safety is the responsibility of a parent if it's a child. That the parent will accompany a child. An older child has to learn road sense. You know. I rode to school on a bicycle every day. My parents made damn sure that I wasn't going to do anything stupid like ride on a sidewalk and mow over a pedestrian, which we weren't allowed to do. But they they taught us. How to be safe. I, you know, Shelburne Road, yes, it's a very, very busy fire fair, but there are crosswalks and there are sidewalks and. I don't expect anybody. Any sane person to wander across Shelburne Road. Other than at a crossing, a light, a crossing with a with a traffic light or a flashing beacon. So so I'm not sure we we shouldn't. I I feel we're overburdening people with regulation here rather than. Than anything else. I, it's. Monica has very strong feelings about safety. She's been not a witness, but experienced a very unpleasant thing that happened to somebody else here in South Burlington. We all know about it. And we're so a bit sensitive, but. Sa- safety is to some extent the responsibility of of us citizens, whether we are parents. Or not.
So so I guess.
Can I just say to that, though? I mean, Michael, school buses can't even stop on Shelburne Road. There are state laws that prevent children from being on that road. It's not just my. Being sensitive.
It does feel like, you know, we can come to a medium ground of, you know. Us providing a safe walkable, you know, it sounds like what you're talking about from the building. You know, to where it's going, being short, like the quarter acre, your quarter mile seems very reasonable and. And you're right, you wouldn't want someone to have to draw like, you know, you can't just draw a bird's eye view and assume somebody's going to dart across Kennedy. Drive, but. You know, I think there's maybe some medium ground where the Michael and Monica are talking about, like, if it is an already an existing. Safe, well lit crosswalk. You know, maybe that's reasonable because it.
Well, and on the other hand, to Michael's point, I mean, if it's going to be right on Shelburne Road and you just, that's all you have is you're surrounded by these big roads, but you're going to choose to live there. Then, like Paul was saying, the internal. Room that has windows that can open up to, I would choose that over, I mean, you have to have something, you have to have a place to get out of your house to get some fresh air, whether it's your own balcony. Or a shared top floor, or I mean, I know that the in the building that's. This is called the Bartlett Bay, I believe the person that lived there. Did tell me that they, nobody ever used their common room, but the concept is great. So I mean, i- i- if you're in a situation where having a safe exterior. Open space experience is not going to be able to happen, then finding some way. Per unit or within the building, I think is a great alternative and it should be considered to be on that list.
So i- if I can sort of suggest a wrap up to this conversation, I'm hearing general support for the approach. We're hearing some adjustments on how do we make sure that this works really well for small lots in terms of either. Bolstering the language for connection or making sure as we look through the site amenities that there's good options across the board. As with the city center form base code, after you adopted it. You found some additional tools that would work really well. This isn't a one and done. That, you know, that this is the answer for all time, but this would be a significant step to have all. New development have some level of a. Site amenity associated with it. So if you're prepared to do that. We can take a look at some of these little tweaks and if it's not perfect in the first round. Just as you did in the form based code, you added in a snippet last year to deal with some small lots. You know, maybe you wind up saying, you know, balconies are. Something that you want to add in, or maybe you put it in this draft, but don't let that be the. Reason to not proceed if you're ready to proceed in the big picture.
And just the very last thing for me to add on on that thing is you can also. There's also an opportunity for having something like a a private or semi-private outdoor space count up to a certain percentage, but then there's still as a requirement for the common larger open spaces. Like there are other things that can be moved around in some of those percentage requirements and not just say. Because I I mean, what I'm hearing is you don't necessarily want a building where all of the site amenity requirement is met by private balconies and there's no other. Outdoor common space. There's sort of a middle ground between those things that we can be discussing as we move forward. Yeah, and it sounds like Monica is even suggesting for small lots where there might be less. So that kind of an approach seems pretty reasonable.
I like the approach altogether.
Michael, did you have your hand up again?
Yes, if we're if we're moving on, I have some questions. On the very first page. About which. About waivers which the DRB may not permit. That's three C waiver applicable to lot coverage and or building coverage and F. Height restrictions. I'm asking a question that if we don't allow. Waivers. Of these restrictions. One, we won't. Yes, we probably won't achieve the high density that we might want in some of these districts or in on some of these parcels. And we won't achieve the affordability that we might want. So it's it's a, it's something that bothers me. Because we want high density and we want flexibility. And we want affordability. Particularly with. All right, gen- general P U D, but when it when it's an info particularly and and it's a redevelopment. So I have, that that's a question in my mind and I'm not sure what what you all feel about it. But it's something that I feel is is problematic.
It's a good, it's a good point, Michael. You know, I think that. I guess what I was thinking when I read this was, and you know, I'd actually talked to Kelsey about this last week. Was that, you know, we haven't tackled scenic views, which is something we've talked about a lot, and we also. Might wanted to take a look at heights in general in our different districts and and maybe. Make some adjustments to what heights are reasonable in different districts. Instead of kind of with this tool where we haven't really gone back and looked at those heights, just letting the BRB make. Waivers. It seemed like maybe for this tool, we're trying to do quickly. We leave the heights the same and then, you know, it's something that we know we need to look at maybe on a zone district by district basis. And I don't know if staff had.
Yeah, so one suggestion on that, and maybe this is something that we can be a little bit more clear on specifically on the height issue, Michael. What I think we were intending to say there, if you agree, is that the P U D does not provide a general waiver of heights. However. The regulations in Article three have a specific. Review criteria in your higher density zoning districts that allow for a height. Adjustment of maximum height. So the idea is that we're not providing just a general, you can waive stuff. But rather that. You would be pointed to the specific criteria of when heights are appropriately allowed to be increased. So I think that's that's a little bit of a tidy up thing for us in there, but that was that was what we meant to say was. You know, don't just allow it to be a waiver, but instead point to the standard that says you've got to demonstrate that you're not impacting scenic views and things like that. Does that somewhat address your concern on that specific one, Michael?
Well, for now, I I think.
I think Jessica's answer is the long term answer to actually look at heights in these districts and.
And you know, I think I've I've put you all on notice that that's going to be a hot button issue for me going forward, because if we don't. Change some of these restrictions. We aren't gonna satisfy the demand for housing. And we aren't going to satisfy the requirement for affordability. And I've said, we're gonna have to go up because.
And I guess, you know, just to quickly follow up on that, I think that, you know, we had talked about some different ways that T D Rs might be able to be used. In other parts of the cities and we had, you know, I know at least at one point thrown out that maybe. Lot coverage or height or there could be different things that that those T D Rs could be used for. So it feels like we maybe want to be. A little more streamlined here, so we have those options as we get into that conversation.
When we wanted to be mindful of. Feedback that you'd given to us last summer, which is, you know, this general P U D allows for flexibility, but isn't necessarily. Asking a whole lot in return for it. So we wanted to be mindful that, you know, we're not returning too far down the path of just sort of giving everything away. And so, you know, this gives you the ability to say, you know, wait a minute, maybe we want to allow for increased building or lot coverage at a future time. But as you said, maybe with T D Rs or maybe in exchange for greater affordability or in exchange for you get more building coverage, but you have to have. More density in order to do it. You can't just do buildings to, you know, have. A big Verizon store or something like that. I I'm I'm sort of saying you're reserving some ability to use the tools to get something. That meets a city goal rather than just saying, oh, we'll let you waive it. I think that that's kind of we responding to last summer, you, you know, wanted to be making sure we weren't just giving things away just to give them away.
Did you want to follow up on that, Michael, before we?
No, no, I think we should, we we should come back to it later. If we we need to get this, we we promised the council that we would get this done in a hurry. And we're. We're not going fast enough in my view.
So I had.
It was just a question that we should come back to.
Okay, good.
Okay, Monica, so I had a specific question, but I also had a bigger strategic question. Specific question relating to affordability is when I read. E one B, it made it seem as if you may get additional. By using inclusionary, but inclusionary is now here, it's definitive. I wasn't sure if that was reading to. Is this reading, is it clear that this P U D requires inclusionary?
The language is written as may because.
Of the.
You, you don't have to do inclusionary until you reach a certain point. And also you can choose to do even more inclusionary and get a bonus for it.
So, right, so I assumed it was relating to that, but I didn't see any reference anywhere else, so.
Right, because similar to the open space, the standard for affordability isn't about a P U D, it's about all development.
Fine, okay, that's fine.
So what this is saying is, just to be clear, you, because state law says that if you're going to have P U Ds, you have to say the ways in which. Density can be modified.
Okay.
So we're cross referencing to the standard that allows.
That's fine. I just wanted to make it, make sure, right, okay. So then my bigger strategic question is, I'm glad Michael brought up the word affordability and this is coming from me. It's not coming from the committee. Now that we have. Inclusionary zoning. I do think that we should all make sure we are understanding what kind of homes, forget about if somebody owns or rents it. I do think it makes a difference, but. Like. If we're racing to just make super affordable on Shelburne Road. Is that what our strategic mission is? I think we're looking to build homes for people. That let's strategically discuss those, because these are homes that we're going to, some of them we're going to be. In another part of the city, but but less of them will be, so we're sending them here and that's great. But let's make sure we all understand or have a sense of what we're looking to create there. And Ted brought this up in terms of. Understanding the quality of life. But I also think in term, so as part of that, you know, what is. When we're saying that something is affordable, I don't think we're jumping to extreme perpetual affordability of all units. That's, there will be some buildings that do that, but we need to make sure that we have some, you know, two and three bedroom apartments. Where families can live, we need to make sure we have some studio apartments where some professionals can live that, you know, like. So I'm not sure when we do that, I don't want to slow anything down, but I think we need to have a strategic conversation about. That so that we all understand. What like when Mark, when Michael says affordable, what I want to understand what he's talking about and make sure we all agree with that. So I'm not sure of the time, but. I think we need to have a conversation.
Monica, affordability is already defined in section eighteen.
That's what I'm talking about, because there's also just things that people can afford. So you're talking about perpetually affordable, and if that's what you're talking about, that's very different than.
Not only, not only.
Okay, well, that's, see, that's what I mean. So so I just want to make sure when one person's saying affordable, we're not referring to perpetually affordable as defined in eighteen.
So. Did you?
Go ahead, Michael.
I had also flagged this. E one B, and I thought perhaps the wording should be additional density can maybe achieved through inclusionary zoning. And the application, not all, because you could have a little of each. Could you not?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And the application of transferable development rights.
Paul, were you going to say something?
I just wondered if there is. A number that's the threshold for affordability.
Do you mean like a price point?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's eighty percent, it's a household, it it variable depending on the size of the household. So if you're a one person household versus a. A a family. The regulations follow the sort of general guidance that's used by the housing and urban development at the federal level, which is that. Yours. A family earning eighty percent of the median average income for their size of household. Pays no more than thirty percent of their. Household income towards housing and then housing is defined as being, you know, for rentals, it's rent plus. Heating plus. Your power bill. And on the ownership side, it's certain, it's certain other things. So that's, we we follow that definition.
Is it rent and utilities and then for ownership, it's also rent utilities mortgage.
Right.
And to that point, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just was gonna say to that point, like, there are people that wouldn't qualify. And they can't find a home in South Burlington. And so.
I guess I would suggest it's it's a really, really important subject. And I would suggest that's a strategic policy discussion for the city as a whole.
Yeah.
You know, that isn't necessarily about our regulations. For example, the council is considering partnering with. A affordable housing group to apply for a grant to get housing that is much more numerically affordable. Than that eighty percent threshold. You know, that can be part of our strategic approach and also, you know, the building next door to us here has some three and four bedroom. Units in it to provide for families. That can be part of a strategic approach, but it's probably part of a. Either a housing strategy or and then ultimately our comprehensive plan, like that's the big policy. What are we trying to achieve on behalf of our citizens?
Did that answer your question? I guess I had a question that's similar to that. You know, we spent a lot of time with the other P U D types, talking about the variety of housing and housing types. And street types and block standards and stuff like that. I guess I'm wondering if. You know, there's, there's some. Kind of. Small things, you know, when you talk about the streets and buildings, but I guess I'm wondering. you know, there's, there's some kind of small things, you know, you, when you talk about the streets and buildings, but I guess I'm wondering like, are we missing something by not specifying something like that in here?
So on the streets and blocks side, the default becomes the subdivision regulations that you just updated that do have street lengths, block standards, shape of lots. So there's a lot in there that this uses as a starting point and then says, if you need a little bit of flexibility from it because of your particular circumstances, the DRB can grant that. So I think that's, it's sort of leans heavily on you guys built some great subdivision regulations, let's use those.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep, and then the, the other part of that is that the design standards that I had, that we had in a previous draft with the example bullets and all of that, that has been, with the examples actually stripped out, but that has been moved or proposed to be moved into site plan, so it would be more generally applicable. So some of those similar standards would then be generally applicable under site plan.
Do, do you want to back up a little bit and describe sort of the conversation with DRB staff about how we got to that? Because I think it's really important that what the DRB has been doing for the last several years and how this can help bolster that.
Yep, so in, um, fourteen oh six, in the site plan regulations under A and C, um, which possibly are misnumbered, but that's just a technical correction. There are standards that the DRB has been trying to interpret and trying to apply to different applications without a lot of direction. So they end up, our understanding is that they end up making some of these decisions, but without as much of a, you know, hook to hang your hat on. So by moving the, these design standards into those specific areas in fourteen oh six, it gives the DRB both more direction and also something to point to when an applicant says like, I'm not required to do that, like, we've put some of those, those considerations into site plan for the DRB to use and clarify what, basically, it's a way for them to click, it's a clarification of a standard they've already been trying to apply, just with a little bit more detail.
So this is the standard right now that's in here, this applies to all site plans, um, relationship of structures and site to adjoining area.
That and up in A one as well.
Okay.
So there's two sections.
There are two sections, but they're equally short.
Yes.
The, so this is the language that the board has been using for places like the CVS that was built at the top of the street and the applicant didn't want to do a door facing Williston Road and they didn't want to do an especially attractive building, they just wanted to build a normal CVS. The board leaned as heavily as they could on this language. Similarly, the board just issued a, um, uh, decision uh, in the technology park area for a new on logic building. And one of the questions that they were, use this for as best they could was to say, everything around it is a brick building, how are you relating to this building architecturally, this building to the rest of it? The feedback that we got from DRB staff was, hey, these tools that you were thinking about putting in a PUD, rather than just applying them in a PUD, that would be helpful guidance to the DRB just generally. What do you mean by relating harmoniously to yourselves and the terrain? It's really hard language for them to apply. So if you are able to take those things that you had in your draft from a few weeks ago that talk about rhythm of, uh, the, of, of buildings and uh, architectural styles that are complementary but don't have to be the exact same and uh, relationship to the scale of what's next to you, that gives them something to work with. So that's.
They want us to add that from.
Rather than having it only apply in a PUD, have it apply in site plans so that it's always what they get to look at.
And is that something we'll try to do at the same time that this generic?
It's in the draft that you got last week.
It's on page twelve of your, or ten, sorry, of your packet.
So it's just moving it over from PUD
Oh.
to site plan.
I see, this is site plan page, got it, okay.
So similar, similar conversation to the open space one of, rather than reserving this only for a PUD, just have it apply and be a tool that the board can, can use to make sure that there's good design regardless of the style of development.
And I, I think something that's important is that we're not actually reading the sections that are already in site plan, we're not actually adding new standards, we're just clarifying with more specificity the standards that already exist. Um, it's not putting a new burden, it's not doing anything, really anything, my understanding is anything more than the DRB is already doing, it just gives them more language both to direct them and to point to when applicants.
So rather than saying a desirable transition, it's saying this is what we mean by a desirable transition, because desirable, as you can imagine, is a really hard standard for them to meet. There's lots of people have lots of desires in this world.
So just circling back to Jessica's original comment and how it relates to this, because I also had that written down, particularly in, in, um, like, I, I said, what are the other things that we really liked about the TND that we can easily? And the one that stood out to me was ensuring that there's a variety of housing, not types, but uh, number of bedrooms really is the only way when you're in one big building would be the only way to differentiate, I guess. So I, um, liked the idea that we were doing in these other areas and I feel it would be great to do here as well. I mean, I, I don't know if there would be a developer that would say, no, I really want to do a building with only studios. I mean, maybe there is a concept that, that, and a business that, that says that that's what they want to do. Um, so maybe it's not a good idea, but, but the, the, the difference, um, um, in- ensuring a, a, a variety of unit sizes accomplishes something that we enjoyed in the other PUD, so.
And specific to the question of unit sizes, Monica, I think, so, so it's a good question and we should do an assessment of how things have been going the last few years. The inclusionary requirements do encourage that to happen um, already, uh, in, in the recent applications, and they encourage it two ways. One, the number of bedrooms in your inclusionary units has to be at least the same as your, as your, uh, market rate units. So if you decided, oh, I want to do a bunch of studio inclusionary units, you've now restricted yourself to studio market rate units, which is not especially desirable. So we've been seeing more of a mix. The other thing in the inclusionary is that it is incentivized to do three and four bedroom inclusionary units, because you get to count them as extras. And we have seen some folks use that. Um, O'Brien Brothers in their, uh, O'Brien Eastview neighborhood is making uh, three, at least three bedroom ones that they get to take some extra credit for, and they're putting them in triplexes. Um, which is great, because it's adding into the different housing types.
But are there any that are market rate as well, or are they just the inclusionary?
That are three bedrooms?
Yeah.
I would say in the, in their specific case, they're building a lot of single-family, two-family, three-family. A lot of their target market is three bedrooms for the market rate unit ones. It's a little bit trickier when we start to talk about big buildings. You know, like a thirty unit building, how do we incentivize three and four bedrooms? I would suggest that's a really good problem to tackle, but maybe not one to try to tackle in this immediate round, because it's a tricky subject of how do you incentivize that?
Okay, it ties back to my other, my previous thought, which is it's not all about affordability, it's about people.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that I'm, I'm somewhat concerned that we have seen, you know, so many one and two bedroom buildings in the last few years that it's challenging for a young family to stay in South Burlington. So I wholeheartedly acknowledge the issue. I just don't have a quick answer as to how to fix it.
Okay, well, you know, I think that, um, you know, in my opinion, you know, we were talking about rent versus own, I think this is part of it. The, the housing types, um, and unit sizes, I think also factor into like who owns it, but also just having a variety of options available. So, you know, I do think that this is something we want to circle back on, so. Um, any, what else did you have for, you had four things for Kelsey?
We've covered two. The four.
You know, not as bad as we could.
Yeah, we're getting there. And the other, this, the other two, the biggest one was the civic space discussion and we fairly well covered that. The, I would, the next one was the reasons why the DRB can modify the standards. So in, um, G two, those A through D, um, I just wanted to point out that we added D to, and so one of the, one of the reasons the DRB would be able, would be allowed to would be allowed to allow.
Pause for one second, I think I just lost our Zoom connection.
Oh.
And where are we? Because, um.
On page seven of the packet.
Seven, because there's a G above, okay, so, wait, seven of the packet.
Yep, so which is page three of the PUD draft.
Yeah, you're in the right spot.
Anybody else on the internet and finding?
I am.
You're not connected.
About G one?
I am on the internet and my, and the Zoom is still connected as far as I can see.
Did, did Michael just turn the section off?
I'm, no, I'm lost.
Yeah.
Okay, Michael's on, that's great. My, my individual computer just knocked out, but everybody else is still there, so that's fine. Keep going.
Okay, so which one were you talking about?
Um, G two gives the the reasons that the DRB can modify, reduce, waive or or, or waive one or more of the applicable dimensional standards. We did add D, D being related to alternative energy, energy efficiency, green building design, climate change goals. Trying to tie some of the, the desire for innovation in a PUD to specific goals of, of the city of South Burlington. So that's something we added. We also discussed adding affordability to that list. It was added to the characteristics up above in section B. Um, but that's more of just a descriptive section, um, we could add it to.
We, 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 we left it out for the time being because affordable means different things to different people and we didn't want a developer to say it's more affordable for me to not have to meet this standard.
Right, I think that's, that's what my concern has been.
Yep, and that's, I was about to circle back and say like, back to Monica's point about defining affordability and who, affordability according to who and, and affordability is not the be all end all of everything. Um, it was left out, but we did add D to add some more of these aspirational um, climate change related, energy related goals as something that, that could be used as a basis for modify.
So this was, uh, Michael, if you're, if you can hear us, this was in part in, you know, in response to the concern that you'd raised that, that the, that we're not talking enough about climate change in here. And so this is a first sort of step in that direction of saying, why should there be flexibility in the regulations in order to help somebody who wants to do something that can address climate change? You know, maybe they say, I'd like to provide a a hundred foot, hundred and fifty foot wetland buffer uh, rather than a hundred, but in order to do that, I really need some flexibility on X, Y, Z standard. You know, as, as a, for instance, that, you know, somebody's trying to do well, board can say, great, here's, that's a great reason for us to, to provide that flexibility. So just introducing that topic.
Or even that, you know, things along the lines of, I want to provide additional ground mounted solar array, but that affects my dimensions and what I can do for parking and what I can do for other things, you know. The, all those sorts of things were what were anticipated in possibly.
Right, like, one, one super, super minute issue that the DRB sometimes faces, speaking of, you know, so, ground mounted solar, um, we have a standard for how big a parking space is. Sometimes people are looking for a slight variation from that. The board can do it through a tool, through a waiver tool. A reason that you might want to do it is because you're putting solar canopies in your parking lot and therefore you lose a few inches of space. Like, it's super minute and, and, but it's important because the board needs the authority to do something like that. Not saying there'd be a PUD because of that, but that's, that's some of your other, um, authorities that you've granted in here.
So if there aren't any questions about that, it feels fairly straightforward to me, but the, I mean, I would just move, I would move with Jessica's permission to the next point unless.
Oh, yeah, you can move on.
Okay, great.
I'll come back to my other questions later.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the last sort of major thing that we wanted to talk about is, um, the top of page two of five of the PUD under, so C one B. Yep, so C applicability and then section one B.
Yep.
That language, that language is specifically designed to address properties like the Hill Farm. Currently, the Hill Farm property is zoned in a way where it would require a TND. But there has been discussion about allowing a more commercially focused PUD along Heinsberg Road. So that's the language that we crafted to put in there to address some very narrow circumstances. Really, it would be that property and possibly one or two others, the corner of Heinsberg and Kennedy was one and.
Recording in progress.
Okay, and we wanted to bring that up to point it out specifically and see if A, that's something you wanted to address now. B, if the way we have dressed it by allowing the general PUD to apply to the first four hundred feet off of Heinsberg Road, but still having the TND apply for the remainder of the parcel. If that's an approach that you're, that you like, that you don't like, that you, you know, think it should all be a TND, if you think it should all be something else, that's something to discuss. And then also if there are concerns or considerations about height on properties like that, sort of the ridgeline of Heinsberg Road in particular.
Well, didn't you, doesn't this already say that we, they can't waive height?
It currently says.
Tool doesn't change height.
Right, but the underlying zoning height restrictions would apply and I guess Paul has more background about the discussion of.
Yeah, I guess we just wanted to make sure that as, as, so, stepping a half step back, a bridge, uh, last fall, you were considering a neighborhood commercial PUD type. We were recommending not approaching that. You asked last month, what about some of these areas where you had been thinking about it? There's really only a handful of places that aren't built up areas, so this would be a tool to address it. Um, Kelsey's bringing up the heights because, you know, I know that it's been a important subject for the planning commission to be thinking about scenic views in this area. So I didn't want you to have this conversation and then, you know, in three weeks' time say, oh my gosh, Paul, we forgot to talk about scenic views. So it's sort of like, what would be important to you if you were to contemplate allowing basically the underlying zoning now, the R seven NC, to be used for the front part of this property. It would, um, be a little more flexible than a TND, it would allow for all of the uses without, um, a specific scale associated with them, which the TND, as you know, is very, very precise in the scale of the buildings. It could lead to some larger buildings, which is not a problem, it's along Heinsberg Road. Um, but we wanted to sort of have the conversation with you of, A, do you want to do something like this at all? You're not bound to it, but as you talked about, you know, you had been thinking about doing something a little bit more commercial at the front as is envisioned in the comprehensive plan. B, is this the time to do it? And C, is this sort of generally the right tool? So that's kind of what we were kind of flagging for you. Um, you asked to talk about location at the last meeting, so we wanted to give you a jumpstart on it.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we had a intro to this topic in the packet, I guess, two meetings ago. Um, Michael, you have your hand up?
Well, um, yes, I do have my hand up. I mean, it seems that this is mainly for the Hill Farm. Um, and if it doesn't satisfy the owner of the Hill Farm, then we shouldn't contemplate it.
Okay, well, I think it's always helpful for us to have a draft out there for somebody to review and give feedback on. So, you know, if this seems like an acceptable approach, we can.
So what, what would be the zoning for that property, those hundred and thirteen acres or whatever it is?
So the zoning as adopted last night, Michael, is residential seven neighborhood commercial. However, because R seven NC for any parcel more than four acres must be a PUD and must be today a traditional neighborhood. That sort of dictates the form of the entire lot. If you were to take an approach like this, it would say that for, and we picked four hundred feet after measuring a few different places, it's sort of one block depth. Um, that in that first four hundred feet back from Heinsberg Road, they would be able to just use the underlying zoning, become a general PUD and have a little more flexibility to do things that are not so, um, uh, prescribed from a design, from an urban design perspective as the TND for that first bit.
Wouldn't you have to split the zoning on that parcel into two? One is zoned in such a way that you can have a general PUD and the, the rest is zoned in such a way that you must have a TND?
I don't, well, it, it wouldn't be split for zoning, it would be split. I don't, well, it it wouldn't be split for zoning, it would be split for the applicability of P U Ds. I know that's a little bit of a semantic difference, but.
Yeah.
So, um, I have a little graphic that I can show you just so that yours, everyone can see. Uh, the, this is rough, but the pink uh, would be the areas where a uh, general P U D could apply. So we've, you know, there's lots of it in the industrial parks to the right there. And then this this band here and um, up at the corner of Heinsberg Road and Kennedy Drive would be the other place that it could apply.
The tricky part, when I'm what I'm trying to get um, visual on in my mind is that everything west on Heinsberg is at a higher elevation and everything east is lower.
Uh, the other way around. Oh, um, this Heinsberg Road itself is sort of a ridgeline.
Right, that's.
So it starts to drop off going down towards Wheeler Nature Pa- Wheeler Nature Park and then climbs back up to Dorset Street. So the low point is right here. And then on the other side, it drops off fairly quickly.
I guess I'm focusing just on Heinsberg Road itself, that, because when you're at Wheeler Park, you are able to see the mountains pass and it's not, you're not seeing what's in where your marker is right now because that's so much lower down. There are some buildings that are three and four stories there or just three?
Down in the valley, yes.
Three and four, but you don't see them because the depth, but but if they were up right there, that would be very visible.
Right, well, and I I think that that's the tricky part about this particular area of the city is that the place best served to have sort of commercial and or larger buildings from a transportation perspective is also the higher point. And so that's why we wanted to be making sure that you know, as any conversation, if you were to want to create, allow the property owners to have a little more flexibility here, that you're being, that that you've considered this. So, you know, in some other places, what you've done is you've put a cap of the total height. Um, in other parts of, again, this is a little more the southeast quadrant, but you've allowed for height, but you require some gaps. So, um, you know, it sort of depends on what one is looking for. In this instance, I think it's less of a gap issue and more of a, if you're standing at on Wheeler Nature Park by the um, by the community gardens, what are you seeing in the distance?
And actually, um, maybe I'm getting it wrong because it's still south of here. Oh, no, that's.
Wheeler Nature Park is here. So this is the uh, the um.
This is Veterans Memorial.
Wheeler Wheeler um, house is he is where my mouse is.
Okay, so the Veterans Memorial Park is is actually.
But the high, the high lookout's over in that green blob, like.
Right, the the high point is here, the the public views are kind of hereish. And then once you get down to about here, you don't see very much. Um, because you're such, you're such down in a valley.
What, what would the underlying zoning allow for heights there right now?
Um, or as well, it would be dictated by the T N D right now.
Well.
Because the underlying zoning allows for thirty-five feet, but you must be a T N D. And then the T N D, the maximum you can do is two and a half stories. So you wind up at about thirty feet. Does that make sense? And so if you went to a general P U D for the forced four hundred feet, you'd revert to the thirty-five. And then, as I was describing earlier, there are specific standards that allow the D R B to grant a height increase. You could say not applicable in this circumstance, though. You know, you could say capped at thirty-five feet, period. Or you could say capped at thirty-five feet um, for, you know, ninety percent of the length of this road. And if you want to build one tall thing to be attractive, then you could, you, th- there's some options for what you could do.
Yeah, I think that needs to be kept because the view from um, Wheeler Park um, eastwards, if you whatever we build there will interfere, but if you go too high, you're gonna blot out the view of the mountains back there and camels hump and it's, those are, what, those are the amongst the best views east in the whole city.
Yeah, I think anything that goes there will have some level of impact on the view, but you're right, Michael, that they're sort of the there, there, there's a level below which you're sort of getting the bottoms of the view. And then above that, you get, you know, the the iconic um, outlines that, you know, everybody who comes to Vermont takes the T-shirts of.
Oh, I mean, I think, I think we've, we probably do want to do something like you just said, like some kind of cap at the underlying zoning because, I mean, and I mean, I don't know if there's a way to say something about gaps because I just know over the years, we've had a lot of people talk about that particular view of being being very important and you know, we just haven't gotten to that on our work plan. So we just wouldn't want to, I guess, give the impression that it's fine to just build big tall things across that whole section. And then take it back later.
You say, I got a question here. When you're talking about the main, I lost my, the language, but other the art, how did you say it? Artery main? Okay, would being on eighty-nine count as well? Because is the is is the northeast corner not part of the view shed? You know, it seems like it's more when you get farther south is where you're really impacting the view, but isn't it really that quarter? Now, I know this, we don't know what's gonna happen with eighty-nine and exits and all of that business, but from a view perspective.
Yeah, it's a good point and and you know, I.
Isn't that a habitat block?
No, they, we. We won't, I know, I know, but but the corner is is not and uh.
So are you suggesting, Monica, that maybe there could be a little bit more of the general P U D um, extending along the interstate there a little bit?
Mm-hmm, and and in exchange for the southern part.
Oh, so taking out some of that here maybe.
Is is the language so that we're not creating something for one, but you know, but I'm thinking also about um, Heins- Heinsberg and Kennedy, I think you said, but four hundred feet seems like it's take the whole parcel there. But I'm just thinking at a corner, you know, that to me looks like two arterial.
Monica has a point that if we reduce the southern part of that band and and then went around the corner on in the north along the interstate. Um, the the view wouldn't be as impacted as it is as presently shown because you'd have a gap at the at the southern end. We should still have the cap, the height cap, but I think Monica's got a very good point that we could cut some of the southern piece of this band off and go around the corner from the north. Along along the.
But I don't know how you do that in a regulation that works for everything, but that would be my comment.
Let's let's noodle on that a little bit. Um, do you think do you like this idea generally? And if so, to Michael's point, if you liked the idea, the next thing we would do is have a conversation with the property owners there and say, you know, is this something that 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 you like, property owners, because we.
I guess one, one safety would be, are there circumstances like at Kennedy and Heinsberg where we put this in and okay, oh, yeah, we'll do that. And lo and behold, that four hundred is their entire property. So they're actually getting, you know what I'm saying?
Right, in in that case, that may not necessarily be a problem at Heinsberg and Kennedy because that site might actually benefit from being a general P U D, to be, to be honest. Um, it's a very tricky site to work with. Um, there is no good access to the site and there probably never will be from a vehicular point of view. So some creativity could probably lead to s- some regulatory creativity would probably allow for that site to become an infill that it has not been able to for a decade because it's just too complicated.
Paul, what color, what is the blue on your map?
Blue is um, T N D required if you have at least four acres. I just went by zoning districts, so many of these par- properties are below that.
Yeah, because it's the property that the Heinsberg and Kennedy is that southwest corner of Heinsberg and Kennedy.
Right, so it might be below the threshold.
It is below four acres and it, the two, the two sides are about two hundred by about two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So the four hundred feet does cover the whole property, but the T N D is not required anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so, so.
With the four hundred foot designation apply under all circumstances, or is this something that the owner can choose to do?
They could choose to be either a general P U D or a T N D for that first four hundred feet. Um, they would not be able to say, I would like it to be eight hundred feet or two thousand feet. The four hundred feet is very, you know, intentionally. We 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 scaled a few different places and four hundred feet allows for either one quite large footplate or um, two smaller footplates back to black. And um, is the same size as one block under your um, subdivision rules. So you'd be able to put a street behind that and say, now the neighborhood starts.
Yeah, just for some more, some context, mo- a lot of the buildings in the tech park area, a lot of hotel sized, you know, Hampton Inn sized buildings, all of that would fit in that kind of four hundred.
Right, or two.
Or two, or two smaller.
With parking between them.
Yes. Just for a general thought.
Yeah, talk to the, talk to the property owner.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it sounds like we can be flexible with the going around by the interstate too, is what.
How do we legitimately block? I mean, it sounds like we need to establish a view shed there or something to to put, to establish the line. Otherwise, we're creating a reg for one parcel and telling them exactly where they can, and that sounds.
And that's what I don't like about it, but.
Yeah.
Right.
That's a concern, so. Establish a view shed then.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's let's noodle on that a little bit. Um, I'm comfortable with doing something along these lines because the comprehensive plan does acknowledge a transition of uses and scale. So so you're you're, that's your first test in a nexus, but I am aware that, you know, the more precise they get, the more it feels like it's one property.
But I'm okay with it because we did promise an N C D to that landowner and to some other folks, and we have not produced that piece. So I I think that we should put something out there that gives them an opportunity to do something like that.
Okay, because that would, that would be able to be used along, um, I always forget the name of the road. Off of Kennedy, behind the O'Brien Farm, going towards Woolston where the bridge broke. That could, this could apply there as well, couldn't it?
The, that would apply because it's the mixed industrial commercial district. And it's pink in here, other than.
Oh, it's already pink. Sorry, I'm getting my colors confused. Okay, got it. Yeah, 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 okay.
Already pink except Shunpike Road.
So I I like the concept.
The fact that every single time this uh, Hill Farm property has been discussed publicly or privately, there's this this issue, this uh, concern about the interruption of the view has been raised. It's a very sensitive issue, uh, particularly to people who who frequent the Wheeler Park and who live at the village at Dorset Park. So we shouldn't forget about it, but um, we we may only have uh, a solution by capping the height along Heinsberg Road.
Okay.
Good. While we're in that section, I did have a question about C two. General P U Ds are prohibited. And the only areas, the only areas listed are the S E Q N R P, R one and R one L V. So that reads to me like this could be used in an R four or an R two.
So.
I got confused.
Yeah, so this is one of the pieces of language that I've been working on cleaning up. It's the result of having written multiple drafts and not totally cleaned up the language. So the next version of this that you receive would not have C two, that line in it at all.
What, so why are we accepting R one and R one L V?
So I think that it probably would not, is 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 the, is the answer.
What was, sorry, I did not quite hear the question.
What, why are we allowing R one and R one L V to be P U Ds? And I think your answer is they would not. This was a drafting, multiple drafts. Um, we started by saying areas that the 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 full answer to it, Michael, is we started with language that said areas that are not applicable under one of the other P U D types. And then realized, oh, wait a minute, there's actually certain areas that were intentionally not allowed to be a P U D. So we sort of got caught mid draft when we sent out the packet, to be honest.
But wait, my question is why? So are we, are we? Well, we're not, we're not working on the, you know, proper infill P U D yet. We're working on a generic. Is this saying that a generic P U D can be used in an R four, like in the orchards?
It would not be able to because, for two reasons.
Okay.
One, on smaller properties, you already decided la- um, back in December that that's really infill. You want to think about that as a as a separate tool for how you want to think about really small properties. For larger properties, that's already required to be a T N D.
Oh, and it's because of the two acres up here in A one?
So.
So I'm saying this language was an error.
This is my attempt on the screen right now as my working draft to update some of this. Um, to make this all a bit more clear. Two is actually repetitive from one A. One A was not totally accurate because R one L V and a few others. Well, the R two, R four and L N are all have either conservation or T N D or both as elective P U D types for certain. So when you define it by district instead of by acreage, those are actually already pulled out.
But then you marked out, though, does it say on less than two acre of land, you cannot use it, but now that's marked out. So so again, does that mean that somebody that has a half acre can use this?
No.
Now, where does it say they can't?
Because it is an R two, R four and uh, and L N are all zoning, underlying zoning districts where other P U D types are elective.
Only if they're over four acres.
Right, that's a, that's a bit of language that we, that I'd still have to clean up, where it's currently written as defined by zoning district with no reference to size in this draft.
Okay.
And so the size question is something I have to figure out.
Okay, so this will not be able to be used on a. Okay.
So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we have a P, allow a P U D in R one or?
Uh, realistically, Michael, in the R one district, all of the parcels are much smaller. That they're, they're only a couple of acres in size and we were following your guidance that the tr- the very small parcels get very tricky. And that you wanted to deal with that separately. So we're sort of.
Then I can see the redraft is getting somewhere.
Thank you.
So, um, Kelsey, were those all of your items that you specifically wanted to?
We had one last one that we think is a small one, um, that is a little bit of a cleanup from what was in what was adopted last night, which is that, um, can you describe it about the the master plan threshold?
Yeah, so the the master plan requirements that are now in the L D Rs uh, apply to multiple structures on a single user lot or complex. And with no other qualifiers for lot size or development size and the effect through a few thought experiments and actual examples means that there are some fairly small properties where an owner either currently has or is replacing a building or is dealing with a few things e- existing things where making any modification would then require a master plan. So we just wanted to start the discussion and just put it on your radar that there is probably a reason to raise the the threshold for requiring a master plan either above a certain size for some of, for something like that, or taking out the multiple use, what did I, what does it say? Multiple structures on a single user lot or complex altogether.
So two, two ideas for you here. One, if you felt like the, this was a very specific, somewhat unique circumstance where we feel like the threshold is just way too low that you wanted to say, we're okay with just dropping that, um, we could proceed immediately with that. More broadly, I think some of the feedback that we heard from all of you when adopting the last rules was maybe the master plan is a little bit complex in various circumstances, you know, whether we're talking about the southeast quadrant or we're talking about other things. I heard from multiple people, boy, that sure seems like a lot of work to do it. That's not a this week project, but you could put it on your to-do list to say. You know, can, can we streamline this a little bit? Can we make it a little bit simpler for people to go through that effort?
So where I would need to understand that is, how does that impact the conservation P U Ds? That are, say, four point two acres are required to be conservation P U Ds, and so would have. Seventy percent of that conserved with, say, one acre left, that's a small area, but we required them to have.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm saying, is that some feedback that if you wanted to take it on as a medium term project. The level of work that you need to get to do a master plan, we heard, staff heard from you. As you were developing, say, the conservation P U D, that it might be a little bit burdensome.
But, but we still need to ensure, though, that it fits the R four, no, that's what I'm trying to understand, so is that what? So like, are we, I don't know what goes into making a full, complete master.
I guess, okay, let me, let me, let me step back, cuz I think I got too deeply into a subject. There is a very small thing that we think you could do immediately, if you were comfortable with about this, what Kelsey brought up of. A master plan is required when you have a pre-existing condition of more than one building on a lot. Regardless of its size, so it could be a half acre lot, and they have to do a full master plan to deal with that. That's a big burden that we didn't really anticipate. You could make that change now. Or if you weren't comfortable with it, we knew that there was some things that you generally wanted to. Take a second look at master plan for tidying it up, that it was maybe a little bit burdensome, and I didn't wanna go into the details of it, except to say. I'd heard feedback from all of you, that it was maybe a little bit burdensome, and there was a work project to. Look at that, that's all I wanted.
I'm just highly weary of unintended consequences, so I, that's why I'm trying to learn more before I can.
So we got, um, we got feedback from some members of public as well as at least one counselor, that the, the threshold. For requiring a master plan was really low, so there's some very simple projects. That would have the burden of doing a whole master plan, even though it's kind of a simple project, so. I think what Paul's saying is, there's like a, maybe a small change to that threshold. That we wouldn't be like letting things slip under necessarily, but it would just. For some of these simpler projects wouldn't require a whole master plan and pro- process.
But how do you defi- how do you decide which one's simple enough to get to meet, get that, you know?
Wha- what would the threshold rise to? I mean, what would we?
I think in, in this case, most of the, other than this sort of multiple buildings on a lot, the other thresholds are multiple phases of a project. Or um, uh, multiple years of construction. Um, what's the other one? There's, there's another big one. There's sort of, there're things that divide the project into many different pieces. This is a sort of a unique one where it just happens to be multiple buildings on the same lot. So whereas all the other ones are really about scale of the project, this one is circumstances of the project, that's, that's what I'm sort of trying to. Break apart, because I think what we're finding afterward, use this for the last three months is. The master plan makes a lot of sense when you've got a project that's gonna take years to build, and you wanna understand how does all the pieces fit together. But if somebody's giving you all the pieces all at once already, and it's one phase of a project, what's the value added? You're seeing all of it in your site plan and in your P U D. Doing a whole master plan on top of that is just sort of a lot of process that doesn't add anything.
So the example I was trying to raise, though, is, uh, we don't wanna make it. Difficult for people that have conservation P U Ds, and we told them they have to budget out, design to the R four, even if they don't build all that right now. But that might be a very small parcel of land. And so if we're actu- and, and we're, we tried to say, you, you know, you don't need to, we don't want to complicate it for you, but if we now remove. Requiring the master plan, what's to guarantee that they have thought through that those are. Whatever they do put in their conservation P U D is at the designed R four, so I just don't wanna.
Understood, and I wasn't proposing anything along those lines.
Okay.
What I was suggesting is there are some unique circumstances in the city where you have a pre-existing built lot. With a couple of different buildings on it.
Okay.
Also, not thresholds wise, but process wise, we heard some feedback that maybe it's a lot, there's a lot of burden. For everything that you have to submit to be a master. But to make it simpler to go through it.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to say.
That's the longer term, and I agree with that one absolutely.
You would propose removing the multiple structure.
Right, that, that's. Pre-existing circumstance. From being required to be a master plan.
That seems very reasonable.
Yeah.
You know.
Are the, again, to Monica's point, are there any unintended consequences that we would?
Don't think so, because you're already seeing the whole lot, so this is a circumstance like, um, on Kimball Avenue, there's two. Industrial buildings right next to each other that are a single user that happened to be on the same lot. If they wanted to be doing a reconfiguration of that lot. The, the site plan slash P U D is gonna look at the entirety of the lot already. The master plan, the purpose of it is to look at the big picture of everything around it, but everything around it is already sort of. All they're doing is reconfiguring the lot. So it, it seemed, when we sort of ran it through some projects, that it was just not really adding a lot.
But, but in that circumstance, so let's say that there's the two buildings, and then there's a big paved parking lot. Now here's an opportunity for them to do something better, more efficient, more modern, whatever.
Yep.
And maybe more environmentally.
And so they can use the P U D to do all that. Level of review on top of all of.
Okay, so they would still need to map that out and say, actually, this used to be a paved parking lot, but now we're gonna make it a stormwater.
They can do all of that. The master plan is, how does it fit in with the half mile around it? Which, at this scale, doesn't really add any, I guess, is what we're finding.
Well, unless they're surrounded by hazards, and then it would anyway, they'd have to show that.
Yes.
As long, that's what I'm, yes.
It's more about like, where would you wanna put new roads connecting? Where would you wanna put that, um, new, if it were a greenfield, where do you wanna be connecting the? The, uh, the natural resources, but this is for a pre-existing built lot. That.
Has multiple.
Is, has multiple structures on it, it's a really unique, if there's like five properties, well, more than that, there's. It's not broad applicability, but Murphy's Law had it, the, the first two projects that we saw had this problem.
So, do you need a motion from us if we want to remove that, or how would?
I think if you're comfortable with it, we'll put it in the draft that you see in two weeks.
Um, Michael?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I have to bail out, um, I'm done for this evening.
Can I ask one question before you go, Michael?
Yeah.
Um, so timeline wise. Kelsey, I'm looking at you a little bit here. I think that we can put a cleaned up draft in your next packet. That would put you in the position, if you wanted to, if you were comfortable, to potentially warn a public hearing at your next meeting. Which would meet the timeline that you talked about last month.
But can you attach the subdivision and site plan?
Yep.
Parts as well in terms of open space and civic space, and look at that, okay?
So then you'd have the ability on your next agenda, if you chose to, to warn a public hearing for. Mid to late March, and then be able to give it to council conceivably, depending on the feedback that you get shortly after that.
So, my question then is, do we have to wait two weeks, or can you do it in? Can you send it to us in a week, so that we've got a?
Well, we'll send it to you, we'll try to get it to you by Wednesday, so a week from tomorrow. Uh, so that you've got six days to review it, but for the packet, um, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
Great.
And, and in the, and we're not gonna be reducing. We're not reduced, we're not agreeing to.
Feel better, Michael?
We're not, uh, we haven't agreed to reduce the open and civic space requirements, right? In what you'll be doing, they'll just be moving to the subdivision.
I'm not sure what you mean.
So, percent, six percent.
Those all, we are what we are going with, we will no longer have the fifteen percent that I had in this draft, that would be only applicable for the P U D.
So it'd be the ten percent from the subdivision to six percent from the site.
But different percentages of different measurements, to be totally clear, ten percent of buildable area versus six percent of floor area.
Right, and the Larkin building right now has none of that, by, by requirement, right?
They have exceeded it of their own choice, but they had zero requirements, so all of this is, is a substantial step forward for you all.
Any, anything else anybody has or questions or?
This is really exciting, folks, thank you. I know that this is moving at a high speed for this, but I think it's, um. Gonna be really well appreciated by council, and I, uh, I just wanted to add that last night, when the council was talking about this, and Monica, you were there. The fact that the commission came together, and you had a lot of individual pieces that you dis- that you disagreed with, but that. Together you came with, carried so much weight with the council. Both in terms of the product, but really frankly, in terms of how they looked at it. They said the commission figured out how to take a lot of opposing viewpoints and, and, and marry them. And I think that from a tone, that carries huge weight, and really appreciate the hard work that you took to get to, and I know that everybody had to. Give things that they felt strongly about in order to get to it, and it paid off a lot.
And in fact, you know, after Michael and Monica had both kind of spoke up to that effect, that although there were individual items and a lot of discussion and debate. And split votes along the way that we had all voted together, then there were actually a few people from the public. Who just came right out and said, you know, look at all this compromise the planning commission did, you know, I think you should just vote for it. They were like, I wasn't even gonna say anything, but I think you should, you know, it was really interesting to.
But we also made it very clear that this is an evolution.
Correct, and I think this, what you're working on right now, is responsive to.
Yeah.
You, you hear feedback and you can deliver something that.
Yeah.
Moves the community forward.
But also, there are, there are reviews of things that were in there that were supposed to.
And not every zoning amendment has to take three years.
Yes.
We had a lot of discussion amongst ourselves about this issue and decided in the end that it would be much better to. Present a united front to the, to the council, yeah. And I think that's paid off several times, actually, you know.
Yeah, so thank you all, um, so we do still, we have some minutes on here, January eleventh.
I was gonna ask if we can delay those, cuz there's two big things that were not in the minutes, and I wanna wait to see the video, so I can offer some edit.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I think the things were actually the next, the next meeting after this one.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
But we can delay, we can, you can watch the video.
Yeah, let me, yeah, have an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, then any other business? Then we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.